And thank all who are present and who are watching live stream. This is a work session. And the first item, well, we don't have any public or written comment. So the first item on our agenda is the board's strategic goals. And we will have, the presenter is Duckell.
Actually, it has me listed, Madam Chair, but I think you and Mrs. Bernis could lead this discussion just as well as I can. If one of you two or both would like to go ahead and get started.
Okay.
Yeah. Or if you'd like me to do it, either way.
Okay, no, that's fine. Do you want to, do you want to start?
Hey, do you just want to go back and forth between?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great.
Get my microphone so you guys can hear me. All right, we are going to do a recap, I guess, right? So we just talked about each of the different goals and the areas and the objectives that go with them and then the key indicators. So I'll just go over the student achievement one. We had a really good board of people that helped us. A good council. So, point out anything if you guys have any questions, I think we can all answer them, hopefully. So that first one is that our graduates are prepared for college, career, or technical school. The key indicators on the other side don't necessarily like answer that first bullet. So I'll go through the objectives first and then here's our key indicators. Students have the confidence to explore and participate in a variety of activities, including extracurricular and co-curricular activities, CDE and STEM. Students are confident in their reading, writing, and math skills, and board members are aware of and support special education programs and services. So we thought that to fulfill those, our key indicators would be showing the number of college readiness exams and industry certifications, dual credit AP test participation, extracurricular, co-curricular, and club participation reports, the ISAT, IRI proficiency and growth assessment data, elementary, middle school diagnostics and intervention data, semi-annual special education director reports, and board school visits to special education programs. We thought that special had really fit into that first one nicely. And that's why they're in there.
Any comments or questions for anyone else?
I guess the only question I would ask is can we make STEAM or STEM STEAM? Or do you consider that part of extracurricular? How does the district, I mean, do you ever use STEAM versus STEM? Or does it matter? You know, it's me, I'm going to make a plug for the arts.
We've been using STEAM.
Have you? Let's use STEAM.
That's fine.
What's the?
Any other?
For the arts!
Oh.
Yeah, I mean, it is, it does say co-curricular and extracurricular, but it's fine, we can, I think it's great.
Awesome, thank you, I like that change.
Any other comments or anything about this one? Do you feel like it matched our discussion that we had? The next one is community engagement.
Can I ask one other?
Yes.
Quick question, so on, on some of these reports, are these reports that are readily pulled? Or is this stuff that you are already collecting and then can disseminate? I mean, it's, we're not asking for something that is going to, you're going to have to recreate a wheel in any.
No, we already talked about this in that meeting, and these are all things that are already being done.
It's just.
There's nothing new here.
Perfect.
There's no new tests, and there's no new, there's nothing new.
Great.
The only thing new is the semi-annual special education director report, but that's really for the purpose of supporting her. So that she can be able to let us know if there are any needs. So that's an extra thing, and then the board visits to the special education program, that is new. And so that's on us. But those are, as far as I know, those are the only two things that when we talked about that. Do you, is that what you remember too? Then, community engagement stakeholders.
Madam Chair, I'll just, I want to add to that one real quick. That when we first came up with our list, we know a lot of people did put special education, but we just didn't find a special, a good box for it. And so we just felt like that really fit there. And by adding those two extra things that we do as a board, we're not giving them more work to do, but we're pulling from what they're already doing so that we can get that information.
Yeah, and we have to have data because that's what our job is. And so whether, whether, whatever form it takes, we have to have that. Because that's like our main focus is student achievement. So, so we definitely need that. Community engagement, any other questions on that one? Stakeholders are engaged and aware of school, district, and board activities. Stakeholders participate in board committees. Family partnerships are strengthened through regular communication, engagement events, feedback, opportunity, and strong parent organizations. In our, in our policies, it does say that every school will, will have a, like a, a parent organization. But it, but it's not, it's not necessarily like PTO, PTA. It's like with the administration. Key indicators, so that's already in our policies. Key indicators, board meeting attendance and views, board briefs on social media and websites, which I think has been really helpful to have a recap and then the links for important things. Tada One Family Night participation, they, they take that, they already track that. Number of school volunteers, which are tracked, school newsletters, regular parent participation, school reports on parent organization activities, and parent teacher conference attendance numbers and parent engagement survey responses. Any questions on that? One, one thing I will say on that parent engagement survey responses, we can get a copy of that and we can add or take away questions depending on if there's something that the board feels that need, that we need information about, that's just go straight to the parents and then it comes back. So if there's something that would be important to add to that, we can add to that. This indicator is just a number of responses, not necessarily what the responses are.
So, comment?
Yes.
So one other thing that kind of jumps out at me, and I don't know if I'm digging too deep on this, but when I was thinking of community engagement, yes, it involves our parents, our, our families, but I'm also wondering about the community at large. And how would we, you know, whether, is it just through Courtney's, you know, PR releases, you know what I mean? How are we then?
The first two bullets on the left side, when it says stakeholders, everyone who is a taxpayer is a stakeholder. So that is the entire community. The only, the only thing that refers to family is the third bullet.
Right, but I'm wondering outside of a parent or a family or a teacher or someone who is directly connected to a school, how are we engaging then with the rest of the community?
So if you look at the key indicators, we're tracking it by the board meeting attendance and views, which are open to everyone, all stakeholders, all taxpayers. The board briefs on social media and on the website. And then as far as the rest of them, those would, well, actually volunteers is the community too because you don't have to have a child in any school to volunteer. So that would actually be the community. So I guess the first four would be community and can be both. And then the other ones would be more parent, or I guess more specific to parents.
I guess maybe what I'm looking for, and maybe it's just another key indicator, is do we track how many times we, you know, do press releases? Or how, how much are we engaging with outside?
We, I mean, I don't.
Does that make sense?
I don't know if we need to.
I'm trying to see where it's.
I don't need, I don't know if we need to track a number because a number doesn't really tell us, tell us anything. But I feel like every time anything important happens, there is a press release. So, I don't know, to me, I feel like that is definitely being covered. But if there's something you want different than what's, than what's already being done.
I, well, I guess that's kind of, if these are what our goals are, some of this is going to be what we're already doing. And so that's the piece that I think is missing here, that we need to identify, that we're also tracking. And I mean, those, those numbers are already being pulled and we are getting that information. But I think that also represents an indication of how we are communicating what we do to the rest of the community, to the business leaders, to the.
The first two objectives, stakeholders are engaged and aware, so you're talking about that.
Yeah, but then where are the key indicators for that? That's what I don't, that's what I'm not seeing as a.
I, I feel like it's all of them, but if you would like, would you, are you saying that you would like to add?
Maybe just to add that.
The number of press releases we do?
So all of our press releases are tracked on our website. So once, when I send those out to the media, they go directly to Kami. She posts them to the website. We could easily track a number if that's what you want. I used to, I used to include that in my community relations report.
Yeah.
But then I felt like I found more valuable information to share, but that could just easily be a number that's in that report every month.
Well, I wouldn't think it needs to be presented to us, but if it's just there, I think that would be good because we're supposed to read it anyway.
I guess maybe I'm, I'm asking even a bigger question with these goals. Is that how are we now going to, maybe this, I was going to save this for the end of the conversation, but maybe that's why I'm bringing it now, is that here we have these key indicators. Where, are we going to have this on the website somewhere where the board is meeting their goals? How are we, how are we going to be measuring back how we're doing against these goals? And that's going to be based on these key indicators, right?
You know, Renee, I guess this is, this is really, has to do with the new platform that we have that's supposed to be easier, more manageable. It's more, you know, like your homepage, you can, you can, if somebody comes to the homepage, they don't have to search for things, they can just look at stuff. Do you want, is that what you envision with the new platform? So that community members that don't necessarily know how to navigate can really just see? Not just the top article, but see something.
Just like the more specific to the board's work, is that what you're thinking? Yes, for assembly, and I think that it would probably just be something that we would do as part of the board's self-evaluation with the regular check-ins and add these to there to track them.
So maybe we could have on our homepage, because this is referring to us, these are our goals. On our homepage, we have something that when they go S D twenty-five dot U S, they see somewhere in a place that they can click on, like Board Business or whatever. They, you don't have to go to the hamburger thing on the corner, anything like that. It's on the front, on the page, like schools, like what, what?
I think it would probably be like the Board of Trustees page with the links to where you have your continuous improvement plan, where you've had your strategic goals in the past, it would be part of that section.
And would that be on the homepage? When, when you go to S D twenty-five, are there going to be icons? Now, I've seen it with other schools where when you go to that homepage, there are icons. Do you want the parent portal? Do you want community engagement or whatever?
Mrs. Bernis has it up right now. How many steps did it take you to get that far into?
To Board of Trustees?
Yeah, was it just two?
Yeah, so if I go to the regular page, I just click on district and then Board of Trustees.
I think what Hannah's talking about is assembly though, where they do have like buttons.
They have buttons.
To where like the board links will take you to that webpage.
Yeah, it's just a lot easier and simpler of a platform. You don't have to know it's under district. Because I don't know if everybody would know it's under district. If you know it's under district, that's great.
But you're talking about our homepage or sim, or the?
S D twenty, S D twenty-five dot U S homepage.
Okay.
So whatever.
We'll have to look at how that integrates because.
Because whatever the, the public, you know, says more information on our website, well, if a member of the public goes to that website, we would want them to be able to see, have something they can click on right there on the homepage that like our schools should be there, like are maybe, I guess it could be like Board Business, which could say, or, I mean, under, when you click on that, it could be Board Brief or whatever. But that would be, I think that would make it easier for the community to be able to see that, and then we could track that, how many times it's.
We can already track how many times people go to the Board Brief or to the Board page through how it's set up right now.
So that's.
But we could look at other ways.
So as long as it's on the homepage, that there's something that the community can click on so that they don't have to know where anything is.
That just goes straight to Board Brief, is that what you're saying?
That goes straight to Board Business, whatever it is. Because whenever we have a press release, it says more information on our website and stuff like that.
Right.
And so as long as when they go to the website, they don't have to know where to go to find anything, it's right there, not just the top article, but like.
Right, I usually, I usually do specific URLs for that specific topic. So it takes them to that page versus just our homepage.
I guess it would be people reading the paper, you know, and then you're not necessarily, I don't read it online. I don't like that. I don't know, I'm, I just like, and so if, if they, you would, we would be directing them to the school district website.
So.
So.
My original comment.
Yes.
We kind of really segwayed away.
Well, that's what I'm.
Is that I want, when I think of community engagement, it also includes the greater community.
I think you could add a bullet about community outreach through Ed Foundation, through partnerships, through media releases that would encompass that, that whole idea. I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
So, and that would be. So how would that, stakeholders are engaged and aware and are aware of school, district, and board activities. So how is that different?
I don't think, I don't need a different objective. I'm saying, I, I'm asking just to add a, a key indicator. How are we measuring that we are reaching more than just the insular?
I, you could just add something to say number of educational partnerships. That would be something that's easy to track.
Like our key communicators, like attendance.
Right.
Chamber commitments.
Key communicators.
Chamber.
So what would be something that would include all of that?
Just adding that additional bullet, I think would be fine.
So like community stakeholders involvement?
Yes.
Engagement.
So community stakeholders involvement?
What do you think?
I think that'll work. We'll need to refine this a little bit and then we can bring it back to you next week.
Yeah.
Let us wordsmith that for you.
Yeah, because I don't want it to be too wordy, that's, it loses everything if, it just kind of loses.
Okay.
So maybe we can even kind of, on the key indicators, maybe combine board meeting attendance views and board briefs into one bullet so then we're not adding another bullet. What do you guys think about that?
I'm almost thinking removing regular parent participation. How are you going to measure that other than what you've already got? I mean, I don't know.
It's, those are things like, we talked about things like when they have the fall harvest festivals and all of those kinds of things. Just the participation in the activities that the schools do. So it kind of includes everything other than parent teacher conferences.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with combining one and two? So that if we're adding a bullet, we're not, we're not just adding a bullet, we can kind of combine those two so that we're not making it too long? Anybody, anybody opposed to that? Okay, all right, so we'll combine the first two and add another one about community outreach.
Egan, do you want to do the next?
Yeah, school climate and culture. So on our objectives, we have.
So on our objectives, we have student and staff safety, well-being and mental health are prioritized. Students and staff feel valued and unified as a learning community. Schools promote positive behavior, respect and unity. And schools will develop plans to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. That one is, that last bullet is one that will fall off in time, once, once they are done with the celebration. We won't keep that one on there, obviously.
Yeah, the board, board goals are done every year, so this is just for shares, so.
So for key indicators, it's safety committee reports, mental health and resorted practices updates, student attendance rates, teacher retention rates, student discipline reports, student representative reports, student engagement survey responses, community relations and communications report, cell phone initiative communications and the school showcases on the 250th anniversary celebrations.
My only suggestion on that is the two bullets. I would like those two be combined, because remember, the first bullet is talking about well-being. But I really, I would really like a focus on unity. There's a lot of things that divide us, a lot of things that we focus on with differences, multicultural. All those things are very important and very valuable. But if we can somehow say, but how are we the same? So if we, because it says unity in both of those bullets. And so we, maybe we can just say student and staff feel valued, leave it at that. And then the unity would be the second one, only unity. Because the safety, the, the first one, I feel like has to do with, you know, the safety, well-being, mental health, you know, has to do with a lot of the other things. So if we did students and staff feel valued, and then the key indicators of that obviously are the retention rate, student attendance rate, those things. And then the unity, I think it would be nice to be able to, when we go out to the schools, just say, how are you, how are you promoting unity here? Like what, what things do you do? You know, just, and then we can be the ones to kind of go and we can really see, have that be an objective so that we have, we can, when we go to the schools, we can ask, how do you feel like, you know, do you feel like you're more unified, do you struggle with, whatever? Any comments on that?
I'd, too. So that bullet point where you say community relations and communications report, that's probably what I was looking for in the community engagement goal.
Let's just put that up at the other.
So if we just move that up to the other one, that kind of covers kind of what I was looking for anyway.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, for my own curiosity, where the 250th anniversary decoration, how does that fit in? And I don't even know, I've never heard us talk about that before. And so where did that come from?
It's just, our community is doing events, our community, our county, our state. And I'm assuming that all the schools will anyway, no matter what. And I thought, and so we just talked about that, that would be a great opportunity for kind of, I guess, a connection with the community. And the schools could plan ahead and if they want to fundraise, if they want to plant a tree in commemoration of our 250th anniversary, because then they can take their kids back or if they want to fundraise for a mural, or if the P T O wants to do a mural or whatever inside the school, then when they take their kids back to the school, say, I was here during that celebration and this is what we did to commemorate that celebration. It could be anything they want, can be.
I guess on my, my questioning, I think, you know, obviously something to celebrate, I just don't know how that fits in as a board goal. I could see that on an individual school basis, am I wrong?
Because, because it's important to us.
Yeah, if it was important to the board to have essentially that oversight, to ensure that we would carry that through to all of our schools and all the learners would be participating and staff in some form or fashion, I think it fits.
And, and also when we go to the schools, we can just say, hey, what are your, what are your plans? And then it's just a way to kind of connect with the community and I guess, I guess we can connect with them too. Any other comments on that?
My understanding at the meeting is, it was brought up as in, this has been talked about, like in the education world elsewhere, and maybe we want to involve that here. And it gives us a good way to develop a school climate around it and unify around that general cause.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, no, I like the comments you made about splitting up, again.
The two bullets?
Yeah, this ties in with unity and everything else. And the whole nation's going to be celebrating the 250th anniversary. So it's nice to talk about what unifies us instead of what divides, divides us. So I like your suggestion.
Any other comments on that one?
I just, you know, I don't, I don't know how to word it, but I know that they learn some about our country in school anyway, but I think it's, I think it's a great idea to, you know, to showcase our country a lot. And, and the freedoms that we have are more than any nation in the world. And we just, you know, I, I just feel it's really important that we do all we can to push our country and let these kids learn more about it.
In our state constitution, it says we'll have a free and common school for the purpose of protecting. I can't remember the words, but it's for the purpose of preserving our liberty or something like that. And so if we look at our constitution, that is the purpose. That is the purpose they state in our Idaho constitution. I'll have to look it up and see what the exact words are. And so it doesn't have any other purpose, it, that's what, that's what the purpose is overall, purpose. So if we take a step back and look at the really, really, really big picture, that's probably one of the most important things.
I agree with what Jim said, full-heartedly. And of course, Jim is a Marine and helped fight for our liberties. But I think, you know, at the 250th anniversary, it's a good time to reflect upon our Declaration of Independence. We had a lot of wonderful goals in there, but of course, we didn't measure up to a lot of them. The thing about ideals are, you know, sometimes you fall short, but you've always got something to aim for. It's a good time to reflect upon the progress we've made and the, and the additional progress we need to make. But with the unity goal in there, I think it would be nice now to, yeah, reflect upon the progress we've made and celebrate the liberties we have in this country and also to see how we can unify more instead of being divided. So I like the points Jim made and you made.
Any other comments on that one? Megan, do you want to do the fiscal?
Yeah, so under fiscal accountability, we have a balanced budget. It's adopted annually and budget priorities are transparent and aligned with and support the strategic goals. And our indicators are annual balanced budget report, expenditure summary and searchable budget reports. So just making budget reports easily accessible.
And on our homepage, I know it's there. I don't know exactly the way it is right now, but I guess again, when we trans, when we do the assembly instead, it will be easier to find those things for just anybody that wants to find them. Innovation, the district integrates innovative technologies, practices and programs. Staff members participate in ongoing professional development. Staff feel valued and empowered to innovate. The key indicators for that would be the district curriculum committee and board reports on A I, instructional technology, C T E and other unique teacher innovations. And that committee is so awesome. The second one is professional development reports. And then the last one is teacher innovation updates. And by, by teacher innovation updates, I think we talked about in both meetings, we talked about that we'd love to hear from them, hear from teachers when they feel that they, they've kind of discovered something or found an innovative way to do something, teach something, anything, we would, would love to hear that. And so just to let them know that we, we value that and we would love to hear it and have them share it. Any other comments on that?
No, I'd just like to piggyback on what you said. I just finished reading a book on A I by Salman Khan. And, you know, there's been a lot of controversy about that. They've had a lot of problems at the university level and at the school levels. They've been banning A I, et cetera. But, you know, it's here to stay, you know, the genie's out of the bottle and we need to work with it. And you can go out and see a lot of good information where teachers are actively using it to help them write good lesson plans, age-appropriate, at the correct level. And so, yeah, I'm very interested in hearing more about that. You know, technology keeps moving ahead and we have to keep pace with it. And now we're on the A I frontier. And so I think a lot of good points are made in these objectives right here.
Anything else you guys think we need to add to that, to our goals?
I found the wording, just in case anybody cares. It's, underscores the importance of education for a stable republican government. And I guess I would add to that, that to make sure that, that kids are learning that we are a republic, constitutional republic, we are not a democracy.
Where are you referencing?
I just Googled that.
Where are you talking about?
That's going a bit too far.
Are you, are you wanting to add that?
No, no, I'm talking about that, that was kind of an underlying reason for that goal.
For innovation?
No.
No, back to what we were talking about, the 250th celebration.
We went back to that.
We talked about, we were talking about, well, I mentioned the constitution, but I didn't, I didn't remember how the wording was, and so I just quickly.
So if that is the underlying meaning of that, I want it removed. Because that is going, you're, you're now crossing some boundaries of definition that don't belong. That's not our responsibility.
I have no idea what you're saying.
Welcome to the club. I, I, when, when you start bringing in different definitions for things, when you said that that's the underlying reason for that goal, what, what do you mean?
Two hundred and fifty.
We're celebrating our country.
No, but you're saying you're defining democracy versus a republic. Where does that come from?
No.
Can you read back what she said?
No, that's what I was typing and missed it, because I was like, well, where are we adding?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking for the goal to be changed.
No, but you're saying that's what the underlying meaning of the goal.
Can you restate the, the definition or the underlying?
What was the underlying?
The underlying, like, I guess the question was asked, what's the purpose of this? And according to Idaho state constitution, the purpose, it says Idaho shall have a free and common school for the purpose of.
Right, but you, no, your comment was that we need to make sure kids understand that we are a republic and not a democracy. What did you mean by that?
The, that is it.
Interesting. That's what I object to.
Object to?
That kind of definition. Which, which, my reason for objecting to that is what may, why I'm now saying, I'm not sure that this is an appropriate board goal. That on a school level, I'm not even sure, I mean, that's, you're now interpreting something.
We're both, we're both.
You're interpreting something that we may not, it may not be our place to do so.
So we're not a, we're not a democracy, we're a representative. I guess if you want to say democracy, it would be a representative democracy, but we are a constitutional republic. But that's not really the point here. I mean, this is really kind of going down a rabbit hole.
Well, but that's, I'm just trying to get clarity from your comment, because you said that that was your underlying goal for this. So I'm just trying to understand where you're going.
Um, to understand our country.
So who's going to be producing and?
We already have a social studies curriculum.
They're going to be presented in this and what are we asking? I mean, who's going to be the guardrails on?
So we're, you're asking me.
Well, I'm now asking.
So we have a social study.
I don't think you will be involved with it, I meant.
No, we.
Now our curriculum.
We have a social studies curriculum already adopted.
Is, is that what you're envisioning? I mean, it does.
We don't, I'm not asking for anything new adopted.
So I was looking up the specific, trying to find it in the article, and it's article nine, section one. The state legislature, I think this is the one Madam Chair is referring to, to establish, maintain a general, uniform and thorough system of public, free, common schools. That's the, what comes directly out of it. And then subsequent to that, the narrative, this provision is rooted in the belief that an educated citizen free is crucial for a stable republican government.
That's just what it says in the constitution. It's just, it's for a stable republican government, that's what it says.
Well, this is.
And it's talking, it's not talking about Democrat versus Republican, that's not what I'm, that's not what it's saying. It's saying, it's referring to a constitutional republic.
The statement that you made to the reasoning behind this is what I'm taking issue with. And so now I'm questioning, what is the goal here? And, and what is going to be done? Who's going to be the oversight? Who's, I mean, that's what threw me. I was totally on board with the general celebration, but now you're trying to bring in messages that I don't think are fully agreed upon by everyone. And so how is this going to be? I, I struggle with how is this going to now be presented, monitored? Who's going to, who's, where are the guardrails on it?
So can I explain? Do you have a problem with the fact, with teaching that we are a constitutional republic?
I, I'm looking at this by celebrating the Declaration of Independence. That's what I'm looking at. That seems very generic, very.
It is, that's it.
But if there's an underlying political message that you're trying to push, I think that's where I'm going to stand and kind of push back.
Okay, so this is about what we all believe in?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
My understanding from what you said was that's something that should already be taught in the classes? We don't need to cover that with this celebration? It just, it just needs to be a celebration? And the history and government classes should be covering what type of government we are? We don't need to add that in? I think that was an ad lib on your part and, and maybe.
No, it was, it was in reference to why would we have a goal about this? And it was just, I was just stating the importance of it.
Did you hear what I heard? Did you hear her say the same statement?
Well, she said that we are a constitutional republic.
Which is true.
I don't understand the fight over it.
We're a, we're a democratic constitutional republic.
Right.
I'll watch the video back later, maybe you will as well. And, and if it was an, not a comment you meant to make, that's fine.
No, we are a constitutional republic. I, I didn't mean to say, and I did not say that we are anything different. Okay, so that's it. The next item on the agenda is reviewing the policies for second reading. The, the I S B A policies that we are considering bringing into our policies. So are there any questions about any specific policy?
I have two points I'd like to make. I thought everything looked really good. I did notice in policy fifty-three oh one P, the policy procedure, I noticed a typographical error on the last page under safety, second paragraph. And it says particularly for students who mush across a roadway, and it should be must, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a lot of typing, Ray.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm trying to help, not criticize. You know, you do, you did a wonderful job and, and with spell check and everything else, it's real easy for that to go by. So I just thought I'd help you with that and catch it now. But you do, you did a great job and it's not a criticism, just wanted to help you catch it.
I know, I'm just teasing.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure I made that clear. And you've done excellent work here and I appreciate all the hard work you do. And the other thing was in policy fifty-two oh one, school facilities and under adoption of official school or district flags, that's the very last one. I think we discussed that Courtney had a concern about some of our displays, banners maybe. Some, I mean, you didn't say it, but someone else did. So please do come up and you can clarify. But anyway, I thought we discussed that we wanted to add, we want to add the board may take action to do, to adopt official school and/or district, district flags. And we wanted to add and banners. So that if we have some display, it can be interpreted as a banner.
Right.
And, and so if there's any issue there, then we can just, as a school board, we can approve that. And we're not going to have any confrontation, was that a concern, yours?
No, that's my understanding. I expressed a concern in cabinet when we originally started talking about this, but we satisfied that concern immediately in that conversation. I just wanted to make sure we were okay with all the time and effort and energy we've been putting into our, our marketing and branding with the You Belong Here.
Yes, okay. So I, I just said, we had a discussion, I thought we were. So I, I just said, we had a discussion, I thought we decided we were going to add and banners. So do we want to do that? Because it's not in there now.
Do you feel like that would be helpful?
Yes, yeah. I, I think that the, when you look at the, the law itself, when we really understood and delved into that with school missions and vision and, and branding, I think it's covered there. So I, I think we're okay.
Yeah.
I'm okay with adding the word and banners to the policy as well, so it's covered in both.
Yeah, no, I, the only reason I mention is that we discussed it.
Right.
I thought it was a possible concern. I don't think it's a big deal myself, but I think we reached a consensus that we wanted to add and banners, but I'm fine anyway, I just didn't see it there and wanted to bring it up, and so we can.
No, I appreciate you asking, I'm okay with that addition.
I agree, thank you, Ray.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that's, those are the only points I have, everything else looks great.
Okay.
A usual excellent job.
Two corrected versions to next week's agenda for second reading.
Okay, so the only thing that we talked about at our last meeting before the first reading, and we talked about not even approving it on first reading, because we hadn't really worded, I guess, discussed wording, is the attendance areas. In the ISBA policy, it talks about, it shows, so I guess going back to state law, we're supposed to show what the capacity is for each school, and that's in our procedures, I do understand that. But I would like to have this, as it shows it in the ISBA, there's a graph in the ISBA model policy, and, and that way, that way, it's, it matches their policy. And then it also says, I left my, I left my bag in the car.
I think the purpose of having those amounts in procedure is so that they can be changed without having to bring that back for two readings to the board, because those program sizes can change depending on.
It's not programs, it's the overall capacity of each school. And so within the school, that's, a student can be denied or anything if that specific program does not have space for them. And so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be specific to programs, or even grade levels, it would just be, just what's in ISBA policy. It has school.
So I think when we talked last, last time about this, that we weren't going to include ISBA's policy language there, because we already have that detailed on our procedure, specific to our grade levels, specific to elementary, secondary, and programs. So we were just going to keep that language and not consider that, but if that wasn't the understanding.
Yeah, just, well, it's just, I guess, I guess the ISBA is, the purpose of that is partly to be in compliance with the law, but to make sure that it's in our policy that, that those are displayed, the student, the school capacities. And then the other thing that it says in the ISBA, the ISB model policies, under open enrollment transfer requests, the last bullet is, in our policy, it says the school, the district slash school, oh, oh no, the district slash, oh no, what happened? I just touched my screen and it went to a different thing. Okay, there we go. The district slash school does not have space available based on building capacity, and in the ISBA policy, it says according to, do you remember that wording? According to, I guess what the board has decided. And I, I left my, I left my bag in the car because it, it has it in the ISBA policy. And I don't have that, I don't have a link to that, 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 the model policy. As determined, oh, I know what it says, as determined by the board. That's what it says. Based on building capacity as determined by the board. That's what it says in the ISBA. And then it has the graph, which would also make, put us in compliance with the state law, where, I'm sure it's somewhere, but it's supposed to be prominently displayed. And, and the school capacity can change every year, but it wouldn't change, I wouldn't think, within a year. And so, you know, if this policy, you know, if anything needs to be updated, it'd be easy to just say we have an update, the school is this capacity, you know, it's the whole school.
So I, I guess I've got a question. So then for the Highland rebuild, we added six classrooms, is that correct?
Uh huh.
And so then the capacity of that building is going to change.
Yes.
And then we're also dealing with athletics as far as 5A and 6A and things like that, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's another question that.
On the high school level?
Yeah. And so then you're saying that the, the ISBA recommended policy says the school board is going to set those attendance capacities. So what's happening right now as far as how we determine the capacity of the, of our different buildings?
So we have a physical capacity, but then also, as we've discussed even within the boundary discussions, capacity is determined by the amount of staff that we have. So if we have to reduce staff, and that could be on an annual basis, I mean, we're constantly looking at the elementary, the secondary is a little more stable, but with elementary, it will change and adjust based upon the staff that we have in that building.
Mm-hmm.
And same with programs, specialty programs with our special education classes.
And I guess to bring clarity to this, it's, it's specifically, we are the ones responsible when, you know, for that, and so it should reflect that in our policy on building capacity as set, as determined by the school board. But it, it would be nice to have that graph so that if people say, they said there's not space, but, you know, any question about that, according to state law, it's supposed to be displayed prominently. And so I think that's why it is in the ISBA policy, is because it is, it is part of the state law.
Renee, could we take a look at that ISBA policy and then maybe give the board the option of including that or not, based upon a discussion that we'll have next week?
Yes, and I would say, based on the discussion today, that I would not bring that one second reading for adoption, that that would have to be third reading possibly.
Okay.
So we could do second reading on just this particular policy, we'll look at that in some more detail, because I think that, I'm sitting here trying to, to go back and be like, okay, our procedure, because I know that there was a specific process for how we post, for how we set those in procedure, and.
And that was all in ISBA policy.
Right, but I don't, I, their, their recommended graph is for, you know, just like in general, but ours is specific to our schools, specific to our programs, and that we do set those and they're posted for, I think, is it quarterly that they have to be updated?
Yeah, according to state law, it's, we have to post them prominently quarterly.
So are, have you seen the way we present them on our website?
No, I've looked, but I haven't seen.
Okay, so if you, if you go, can you go to our website right now?
Yeah.
So if you go to st25.us and you go to Families and Learners, it's under open enrollment transfers, and then you can look right there, and we post it quarterly by school.
Which I think that was why we had decided to put it in procedure, was because it does change quarterly and we need to.
So why wouldn't it be under schools? The numbers for the capacities of school, I mean, to me, that makes more sense. Anyway, what was that?
No, I guess I'm, I'm at, I'm at Families and Learners, where do I go again?
So if you go to open enrollment transfer, or open enrollment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
And you click on that, we have all the information there, we can certainly put that school's information on.
And it's elementary and secondary.
It's just.
Oh, okay.
Um, I see elementary and secondary, I don't see, oh, I see, I see all of them.
If you look at the tabs, then it will show you.
Ah, very nice.
One on the right.
Yeah, yeah, AMS, 600.
So we are in compliance with that law.
Right, right.
Doing it this way. I just wanted to bring it to your attention in case you hadn't seen that.
It just isn't in our policy, that we display those, or it's not in our policy. Because we do do that.
But it's the law, right?
We do that, and so it should be in our policy. Yeah.
And the Families and Learners is on every school. So that open enrollment.
Families and Learners and go to what?
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't have thought to go to families and students, I would have, I would have searched for under schools. I guess if, if somebody is wanting to transfer and they, if they're not really looking for a capacity, they're, they're, I don't really know. Anyway, I guess we can look again at that ISBA policy next week and compare it to what our policy says. The ISBA was really clear, and I just wish I had it with me.
Well, I think.
Sorry, I left it in the car.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement that we're going to have a second reading, we're going to hold off, they're going to check on that for us, and we can look at it next time.
Okay, all right. Any other, anything else on the policies? Any other?
I think everything looks good, and everybody, you, and you and Megan and the team did a great job on the, on the, the goals and objectives and, and the policies, lots of hard work there, and, and everything looks good to me, I think we've done some good work, and I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, let's hurry and adjourn so we can have our meeting under an hour.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
Are we, are we ready for that motion?
Are there any other comments, questions, anything? Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any?
All right.
Okay, we are, I hear Ray declares adjourn.